Thank you, appreciate a little bit of time on your agenda.
Mary Ann Yellman.
Colleen Holmes, board member.
Paul Swetzer, superintendent.
I have a blue, board member.
Kimmy Berson, board member.
Jason Law, business administrator.
Thank you, and by way of getting going tonight, we'd have a guest that would like to turn the time to you guys and Joelle, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, appreciate a little bit of time on your agenda. Can I kind of hand these out to you all? I think we have a couple of slides, but wanted you all to have a copy of our annual report. We were saying earlier, the last time I was here is when I started as health director for Wasatch County, and it was right in the middle of COVID, and I admit, I'm glad we're not in that place, so.
It was, it was a special time.
It was a special time.
No one longs for those days.
No, and we, we actually look back, though, and think about how, how good Wasatch County did, and, and I think, I think that's because of our relationships with the school district and with the county, and Kendall mentioned that as a county councilman as well. So, I'll, I'll just maybe go in the order of the slides that we've got up there, so, so these are, are just clips of our annual report as they fit on slides, but a message from me, and I'm not, not gonna talk about that, just acknowledging the staff that we have and appreciation for our Board of Health, and we can move to the next one. We, we have a lot of programs at the Health Department, and one of the big reasons that we try to get out, we go with our Board of Health and to each of the municipalities in Wasatch County, and one of the goals that we have in our strategic plan is to help the community be aware of the Health Department and the services that we offer. And this actually isn't everything that we do, but, but want to, want everyone and, and you all to know that we are the Health Department for the entire county, so not just a county entity, but for all the municipalities and unincorporated areas of the county as well. We serve, serve the entire county, and, and we hope people will use us as a resource and that we can be of benefit and, and help encourage a better, healthier community. A few highlights that are in the, in the annual report, we, we did put together a new website, and that's a project that started before COVID and took a number of years because of that. So, we've recently put together a, a new website on a new platform, and we hope it's more interactive and more of a resource, folks can understand what's there. We're actually getting a new air quality monitor in the valley, and that'll, that's up and going already, and you can go to the Health Department website to see how air quality is, is looking, and right now that monitors ozone as well as PM 2.5, and we haven't been able to monitor ozone before this new monitor. So that's, that's a helpful thing during, when we had wildfires a couple of years ago, that's one area we, we worked with the county or with the school district and talked about, hey, what do we need to let kids know? Do we need to let families know? Is it okay for kids to go out to resource, or recess? And even is it okay to hold a football game possibly when it got really bad? So, we appreciate having those connections. Go ahead and move on, that past page did talk about WIC as well, sorry, I couldn't, can't see that very well. WIC is a nutrition resource, and we hope that, that when your schools recognize families that, that could use help with additional nutrition. Our WIC program not only provides a food package, but it also provides nutrition counseling, so we've got dieticians at the, at the Health Department, and they are great, and they help people make sure that, that the food that they're provided are, is healthy and that they can take good care of their kids and their family. So, with this page, I want to introduce our Board of Health. Dr. Neil Burton is our chair and has been for a number of years, and, and we appreciate him, and Kendall Crittenen is our county council member on the Board of Health, and just this past year, we were able to recruit Colleen Nelson as a board member, and we appreciate her, and, and that, even that she gives us an additional connection with schools, and she's, as she's a teacher and can help us understand what's going on in the schools. Also, Britt Manning is a Midway resident, Sarah Simonsen is great, she's teaches at the University of Utah, and she's a, a public health professional as well, Jay Eckersley and Michelle Ludlow are also board members. And we'll go ahead, go down one more, just a couple of more, more stories on, on our annual report. We talk a little bit about our diabetes prevention program, and this is a, a national, nationally accredited program, proven program, and, and we provide diabetes prevention, partner a lot with the hospital to make that happen and make sure that, that we're offering programs that are, that are proven programs. So, diabetes management program as well, so both of those, prevention and management, and then always working on helping folks make sure that they're going through their health screenings and up to date on vaccinations. The last page on there talks a little bit about our funding and expenditures, so revenues for the Health Department, more than half of our revenue comes from grants, so federal and state grants, about fifteen, or seventeen percent from fees and then twenty-six percent from taxes. And, and then the next chart just kind of shows where those expenditures are made, and a few statistics for Wasatch County. Interestingly, there's a, a national report that goes out for, for ranking of counties within this, within the nation, so not just the state of Utah, but national rankings, and Wasatch County is, is, has historically been in the top three in the state of Utah. So, out of all of, all of Utah's counties, I believe, I believe Daggett County is small enough that they don't even get enough data to be ranked, but of the, of the rest of the counties, Wasatch County's been in the top three. So, so we're happy about that, but we recognize that there's still, there's still folks in the community that need help, and, and that it, it's very important that we continue to be there and, and feel like if we're doing our job in public health the way that we should be, then people don't really know we exist because we're protected and we're, we have an environment that is, that's healthy and good. Just a few statistics, life expectancy, eighty-two years compared to the state's seventy-two years, and the nations below that. For general health, so, so folks reporting that their health is fair or poor, Wasatch County residents say that five percent of, five point seven percent of Wasatch County residents say their health is poor or fair. So, that's, we, we like that we're low in that area, state and nation rankings are above that. One area that we've been looking into is that we do report more folks saying that they don't have health insurance, and so that's something we're, we're looking into and want to understand better. Folks with diabetes, so adults with diabetes, we have less than the state and the nation. Interestingly, we, we do have a higher rate of pre-diabetes than the state, so, so that's been something that we've been prioritizing as well. Depression prevalence, we're below the state and the nation, and then obesity rates, we're below the state and the nation. So, a few statistics, and, and there's hundreds of health indicators that, that we look at and review to consider what our, our priorities are each year, and we have a strategic plan with the Board of Health. So, so I'm in a, I've talked enough, I'm gonna give Dr. Burton just a second, if that's okay with you, and again, thank you for, for having us, and thank you for your partnership with the Health Department.
Thank you.
Just briefly, we, for about, about a decade now, serving, serving on the Health Board, I've had the privilege of meeting with the superintendent or one of his representatives and giving our annual report, and I don't know why we hadn't thought of bringing it to the School Board as a whole, but we appreciate the opportunity of having this audience and sharing a, a few of the thoughts, thoughts with you. I just want to express our appreciation to Joelle as our director, what a wonderful job she's done in the leadership capacity over the past couple of years in guiding us through the last of COVID, and, and we appreciate the collaboration that we've had with the School Board through these difficult times and hopefully into better times as we look forward to making our community a healthier, better place to live. I appreciate all of volunteer board members for, for their service, we, we feel very fortunate to have who we have on the board and have a representative from the, from the county, and we just want to thank you for your involvement with us in the health of the students and our community at large, and look forward to great association in the future.
Thank you.
Well, we really appreciate you guys being here, and, you know, the discussion we had in, in my office the other day, we, we talked about COVID and, and, you know, it feels like we're, it feels like we're kind of common soldiers in the field. We went through battle together with COVID, and, and that relationship we had, there were, there were lots of days in my office that we had, that we had the Health Department and, and some of my administration around the table. It was a common site for, for a long time, and, and we did work very closely together, and as, you know, as I would go to my superintendent meetings and, and hear some of the horror stories about other superintendents trying to work with local health departments, I was, I came home very grateful each time that, that we had such a good relationship and that we were working for the common good of the students. And we did have, you know, multiple issues that we were concerned about as a group, and I think we addressed all of those issues in the best interest of the student, and we know educationally, we came out, we came out smelling like a rose, I guess. We know that we were, we were the only district in the state of Utah to show gains in both, in both math and reading, and probably one of the very few districts in the entire nation that showed gains in, in math and language arts during that time. And I think that's a testament to this board and the Board of Health, working together to accomplish the things that, that we did. And we wouldn't have been in school that much if we would have had more cases, it was a direct result of management of COVID and management of existing cases, and it was, it was done in a very masterful way by, by a lot of people, and, and we, we really appreciate, we really appreciate that. And I think that's something that we can just continue to build on for a number of years, and we, we, we were pretty impressed by your, your pick of our teachers, you picked one of the very best teachers in the whole district, so that was a good choice right there. So, we're, we love Colleen and the great job that she does for our students and, and the history that she has in Wasatch County, and, and she is a great choice to be on the Health Board. So, thank you all for being here, I enjoy my annual visits, when I was first superintendent and Dr. Burton showed up, and we've had quite a few since then, and, and I think since Joelle's been the director, she's been here as well, and, and to see all of you come, and I, I'm glad we did elevate it to the board, and we'll just plan on continuing this each year, so, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I wanted to say something, I had a conversation with an individual last week that doesn't live in our community, and he made the comment, something came up about COVID, and he said, "You guys did such a great job keeping your students in school," he's like, "Maybe better than anyone." And I said, "Well, it really wasn't just the board's decision, the Health Department was huge in that," and I, I even mentioned Randall's name to him, I said, "He was, he was so supportive of what we were trying to do," and, and I know even at times probably crossed the line a little bit and said, you know, "You got to get things under control." I'm sure he was speaking to some of you behind the scenes and, and what, and the message he wanted to relay to us, but anyway, just to, just to echo what Superintendent Swetzer, you were great partners then, and I know you continue to be that, so, so thank you.
And me as well, I want to just thank you, you, you look at the list of these board members, you're, you're the, the health heroes of my life, as I've worked in this field, and admired Dr. Burton for a long, long time, and thank you, thank you for your efforts, and it was, again, back to that time, like you said earlier, Joelle, the, the best Board of Health is one you don't hear from a whole heck of a lot. Well, we were, we were hearing hour by hour, minute by minute from, for a long time, so it's, it's, it's refreshing to kind of see you guys again in this capacity, so, and we appreciate the association and excited for the future, so, thank you so much, but, anyone else?
I would, I would just like to recognize Kendall, we don't want to leave Kendall out, Kendall was my junior high wrestling coach, and has a, had a long, long history as an educator in this district, and I don't know Kendall, how many years you went, thirty-five or? Forty-one, so, and then spend all this time on the county council, and we, we, we never want to miss a chance to recognize one of our educators, so, thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I think we'd like to recognize public comment, if we have, Stace, if we have any online, anyone, public? Okay, well, let's move into consent items, like the motion for our consent items, I'm sure you've read cover to cover.
Yeah?
Yep.
Make a motion, as he, we haven't done this for a while, a couple of months, motion to approve, no.
Consent items.
Consent items.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. We really haven't been up here for a while, yeah.
Rusty.
A little rusty.
Uh, next, I'd like to move into our action items, Jason, recognize you for consideration to approve 2024 fall, sorry, fraud risk assessment.
Well, nothing like fraud risk assessment to shake off the rust. So, once a year, at the end of the fiscal year, and the Office of the State Auditor asks districts to complete a fraud risk assessment, and it is essentially, as its name would lead, lead you to believe, an assessment of practices that we have in place that can reduce and hopefully eliminate any potential fraud. Everybody's obviously interested in that because of the, you know, the importance of the, of the public money that we, that we work with, and so, we won't go over the entirety of the risk assessment. You can see that it, there's, it's, there's a possible of three hundred and ninety-five points, the, the, more than half of it is all based on the most fundamental principle of reducing fraud, and that's having appropriate internal controls. And so, there's a backup document that has some of the things that, so, that we're doing as it relates to internal controls, but this would be something like as simple as, you know, we have two people now that open all the cash or checks that come to the district, they make a record of it, then that moves to the person who makes the deposit, it's different from the two people who open the checks. He goes and makes a deposit, and that can be reconciled with the ledger that, that, that we're recording, so we can make sure that there's nothing that could, you know, slip through the cat, cracks that way. We handle very little cash, but quite a few checks come in, and so, that's, that's another way, we write a lot of checks in a month, as you guys know from the documentation we send you, and, and so another, you know, important internal control is that the person who approves the items to be paid is different from the person who enters those items into the system to be paid. It's also different from the person who approves those and then, and then processes the checks, it's different from the person who prints the checks and mails the checks, so, and that's different from the people who sign the checks, all that is a different person who's doing it. And you, you run into issue when one person has authority to do all of those things, and so, we received, the only thing in, in the, in the assessment that we missed out on was the employing a certified CPA. But we do have a couple of people who have accounting degrees, and, and so that's something we can kind of look forward in the future, but everything else, you know, is, has more to do with policies in place. One of it is the importance of board members signing a yearly conflict of interest and ethics statement, which I have for you tonight, maybe you saw, this is a new one we cut, sort of wrote up, that will, we feel like kind of has all the most important parts, and it's just your pledge to act ethically, and if there is ever a conflict of interest that arises because of your employment or anything, that you would disclose that. And so, we'll, we'll, we'll pass these out after the meeting, you can look at and, and sign those. Everything else then is just about, you know, the, the state has a fraud hotline that, that we, we use, and, and just some of those other things that we, that are in place that, that make sure that we, we can answer yes to these questions. And one of them's an online training that I know Keith went through with you a couple of years ago, this auditor training that he usually does every few years or so, and if, if and when we get new board members, we do that again with everybody. So, anyway, that's the results of the fraud risk assessment, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and after discussion, then I propose that we approve the fraud risk assessment for fiscal year 24.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to motion that we approve the fraud assessment report as presented by Superintendent Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any comments there?
Yeah, so who does the assessment? Who, 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 who scored this? You?
Me, yeah.
Okay, so, seems kind of odd.
Yeah, well, then we, then we have auditors that are here now, and part of their audit then is to go over this.
Okay.
So, this is part of our auditing documents, and so then they do an assessment of our internal controls as well.
Okay.
And ensure that that all, all lines up how we're doing it, yeah.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay, Zach, come talk to us about intercoms.
If you don't know Zach, just build a beautiful garage slash shop at his house.
I did.
Looks great.
It was a lot of work, but it is, it's fun, Stacy and I spend a lot of time out there, so. All right, the first item I have for you is to replace the intercom and bell system at Wasatch High School. This was, I mean, it's something that's been needed, but it was brought on more based on our school risk assessment we did for the House Bill sixty-one last year. We decided that a better, a better mass notification communication system was needed for the high school, so, a lot of this money is coming from a grant that, that I applied for last year through the school safety specialist thing, and then, I think they're covering forty, forty-five thousand of it roughly, and the other sixteen thousand, or eleven thousand we've budgeted for in capital projects, so. So, my recommendation is that we approve the intercom replacement for Wasatch High School for some of fire and security slash PST, that was their old name, for fifty-six thousand, six hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, and the second item would be the same, but for Rocky Mountain Middle School, their system is also very old, very outdated, so this is to replace intercom system there. My recommendation is to award it to some of fire and security for forty thousand, five hundred, eighty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Did you have a grant for some of that?
Yes, yes, sorry, both of these have grant money, they cover, cover roughly seventy-five to eighty percent, just depending what they awarded us.
So, is this, is this a system that, you know how technology is always advancing, how long will this?
So, this is the exact system we're putting in the new high school, so it is, I mean, it's all IP internet-based, it's, I mean, they're, we're integrating it into the older system, so the old speakers will still be there, but they'll have new digital call switches, new head end, the office will have a new means of, you know, they can get on a web browser to access their bell schedules to do everything. So, it's very future-proof, so it's, it's a great system, it's very similar to the ones we put in TMS and Daniel's Canyon, we built them, so.
Okay, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks Zach.
Thank you, okay, and then my third item, this is for access control for the portable classrooms throughout the district. I believe one of the board member or superintendent, I'm not sure who brought this to me to start with, but I, I did an assessment on the, all the portables, we actually have fourteen portables, but three of them we don't use as classroom spaces. So, we decided just to go with the eleven that are actual classrooms, this is to add badge readers, electric locks, everything that's needed for a portable classroom, so that's, you know, two locks per, per portable. Stone Securities, who does all our security integration, they are also a state contract, so it's my proposal that we approve access control on the eleven portable classrooms at five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents each, for a total of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred, forty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
I move we approve some, the summary award is outlined tonight. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, and I just want to say thank you, this means a lot, I think this is great to have some security on these classrooms that are, I mean, yeah, they're, they're, they're classrooms, they're portables, but we need to make sure we can.
The great part about this system is it can move with the portables without any, I mean, it'll just require a little bit of programming, if we move one from Midway to JR, I just go in and change the names of it and hook it up, and it'll work, so.
I think this is one that, um, board member Hanson was.
I think this is one that, um, Board Member Hanson was, is this the one?
About the portables or about the?
The portable?
Portables.
Yeah, so, it's important, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, um, my good Dr. Campbell.
Okay, thank you. Um, this first policy that I have to recommend to the board is one that periodically we need to review. Um, it actually, um, falls under one of the, um, items that gets looked at through our nutrition, um, team every year as they get audited. Um, and look for a regular review of this. This includes our nutritional standards that they follow, but also has some recommendations and goals also that you can see for physical um, activity and, and educational goals related to that. So our, or my recommendation to the board is, is to prove this wellness policy as it stands and.
So did we make any changes to, to this or is it the same one we just reviewed it?
Um, we reviewed it. We did make one change, um, in the evaluation. Um, before it stated that we would have this out in all orientations. We felt with the amount of stuff that we have right now in registrations, orientations, that that would not be feasible, but we will still keep it on our, on our website through the policy manual.
I move we approve the student wellness policy update as outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you much. Yeah, next, sorry. Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, thank you and, um, Mr. Kelly's here too. They could probably answer these questions on the comp time policy. But this is a new policy to our policy manual. Um, what this policy outlines is, um, kind of our requirements to make sure that our hourly, um, workers do not go over eighty hours, which is basically two weeks of work. Um, that they would work with their supervisors to make sure that comp time is done in a timely manner each year so that, um, that extra time that they've worked and that compensation time is actually given them either in that comp time or it was pre-arranged, um, and as overtime based on the need that was, that was had for that employee.
So instead of paying overtime, we pay them comp time? At, at an hour and a half, as you would a time and a half for, if you were paying an hour and a half, you're paying them time and a half or hour and a half.
Correct.
Time off.
Yep.
For comp time.
Yep.
Has that always been the policy?
That, oh, go ahead, Sean.
So the policy was vague before and it was really loose and we decided to tighten it up to try to help with our comp time and overtime needs. And so we revamped it to make this policy from a past policy that was.
We always gave one and a half time. Um, this, what this will do is help us manage it better by making it so they can only carry over a certain amount of time. And the, the idea is that they use their comp time in the period where they're accruing it.
Okay, so that's the period?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve the comp time policy. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Todd.
Tonight I have three, uh, resources, curriculum resources, um, for, for board consideration. And, um, the first is Otis and that's in your packet. And what Otis does is, um, it's software that supports assessment, grading, progress monitoring and student data. And is used primarily in our elementary schools. So it's parallel to Canvas and Mastery Connect in our high schools. So it's a data management system and it helps our elementary teachers track assessments and progress. Um, our elementary schools have been using this for, um, well, um, I don't want, I, I won't say many years, but for multiple years. And, um, our highest performing s- school is finding a lot of success with this and really likes it. You'll see it prevalently at Old Mill Elementary and, uh, the other elementaries are coming along with that as well. And so the yearly contract for Otis is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. And, um, my recommendation is, um, approving Otis at that cost.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks Todd.
So, uh, the, the, the second consideration I have tonight is, um, from a company called Companion and they produce software called Alexandria. And our libraries use Alexandria to catalog their shelf books. And so students can get online and see if the book is on the shelf and if they can check it out. And so this is used by our librarians within the district. And, um, so my request is, uh, the consideration for approval of Alexandria for a yearly cost or for a cost this year of eighteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I move we approve the renewal for Companion Alexandria curriculum resource as outlined.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's for all of our libraries, right? That's a lot of libraries for that amount, like that's a.
Yeah, they love it.
That's awesome.
Okay, and then finally tonight, um, we have three purchases from Savas, formerly Pearson. And one is for my math lab. And that is used primarily in our statistics courses. And so that, um, has a yearly extension or an extension for this year of five hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. And then the other two, um, those are, um, English support materials. Well, it's their primary resource for grades nine and grades ten. It's called my perspectives. So, um, grade ten is ten thousand, four hundred dollars and grade nine is fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, both of those unit prices are twenty-six dollars per student with four hundred students in tenth grade and five hundred and fifty students in ninth grade. So the total, um, the total invoice from Savas is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. And, um, my request is, uh, to approve Savas materials for our high school English and math teachers.
Your motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks Todd, thank you. Steph, come talk to us. Early learning plan, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to ask for your consideration for approval of our early learning plan grant, which is about eighty-eight thousand dollars that we get each year. And it has been used to help pay for our literacy coaches that are in our elementary schools, um, which kind of piggybacks on with the health department being here right after COVID. Uh, the year after we had letters training that came in, that was a science of reading training, that was a monthly training that every teacher kindergarten through third grade now has been fully trained in. It's a two-year, um, weekly training, very, very intense, um, science of reading training. And those literacy coaches are all now state trainers. And so they did all the trainings within our district themselves. And I thought, I pulled some stats that I thought you guys might be interested in. From, um, there's two goals that are written on here. We have a second grade math goal of a five percent increase in our math Acadian scores, which is like a math fluency assessment. And then a five percent growth score, um, for our Acadians reading scores, which is also an accuracy and fluency in reading. And in the last three years, um, we've seen a six percent growth in our second grade math, which has been great. And then in our first grade reading scores, we've seen eleven percent growth, which now those kiddos who first started in first and second grade were in third grade for that first time this last year. And our third grade rise test scores have improved, um, from ten percent, from sixty-two percent to seventy-two percent on grade level or above now. And so it's just really exciting just to see and these literacy coaches are a really big piece of it. And so this money goes towards that. So I thought it might be some fun stats for you guys to be aware of. So I ask for your consideration to approve the learning plan grant.
So moved, money well spent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey Steph, just gonna say, you know, I, it's, it's been amazing just the last couple of weeks as those were announced on these two little schools, how, how cool it's been. So, you know, I, I asked my good friend Sean Kelly, why is this? How, how have we done this? Who's, who's the person that has made this happen? And, and his comment was really great to me is it, it's not one person. It, it, it's, it's this team that, that has worked together, the whole, the whole group of, of the same goal, the coming together. And, and I think that just really needs to be recognized. It's not just one, but, but just thank, thank you for, you had such a role with this and that, that little school and appreciate, appreciate, uh, everybody with this effort of going forward and working for one. So, so thank you.
Well, thank you and I concur. It is a completely a group effort and it's a partnership and you guys are a huge part of that as well. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Uh, bring us home, Todd. Probably just should have done it before, but go ahead.
Flash Garrick, huh?
Flash Garrick, you're taking over Garrick.
Now Garrick, we miss him.
Substituting for Garrick tonight. Um, and I would like to add to the previous conversation how fun it is to work in a district that sets and achieve goals. Um, engagement and morale is just sky high right now. And, uh, how fun it is to start another school year and try to achieve more than we have previously, which is a lot. And that's what these plans are, um, about. And so, um, I'm, I'm representing the secondary schools in, um, the request for approval for their teacher-student success plans. And so the, the way those work is administrators and community councils come together and build a plan. And then that goes before the board for approval. And so, um, I have plans for Timpanogus, Rocky Mountain and Wasatch High School. And the first requirement in the building of those plans is that they align to district init- initiatives and goals. So in addition to the goals that have been set, we also have additional initiatives as a district team. And our district team, um, consists of our building, um, administrators as well as our administrators here in the district office, working equally, trying to achieve the goals that have been set by the board. And so, um, those initiatives that the district team has set include really focusing on the transition grades this year. So primarily, um, trying to help students transition from fifth to sixth grade, where we've seen a slide in our assessment results. And so really targeting that this year, um, we think we can get that to improve. In addition to that, we really want to focus on our systematic intervention time, which is one of the five type things. And really getting the, the, the recommendations for intervention time and then, um, the tier-two teaching that happens at that level, really honed in and focused on the learning target. Um, with discussion around improved instruction for students that we didn't get the first time. And then the third initiative is to, to visit other schools. And so, um, we collect data and we, we have data agreements with the state board. And we are working to identify the most outstanding collaborative teacher teams across the state. And these are the teams that get the pulpit and we feel like we can go learn from them until we're as good as they are or better than, and then they can start learning from us. And so transition grades, intervention time and visiting other schools to learn would be, uh, the, the district team initiatives that these TSSP plans are built around. And so, um, what, what you primarily get from all three schools, most of the money would be, um, spent on personnel. Either additional personnel or teaching or, or, or hiring teachers to work outside of contract time on these initiatives. And then secondly, professional development. And then finally, technology and materials would really summarize all three plans. And so my request is that, um, you would approve, uh, the three secondary TSSP plans um, as detailed in your packet.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any comments?
I, I have a question. How's our math pilot program doing?
Oh, wow. That's a, that.
Is it too early?
Not just like a softball for me, how much time do you have?
It's going really, really well, really, really well. Um, it's caught the attention of the state. And, um, it just makes sense, doesn't it? That if we're trying to get students into first year college math, then we would use the prerequisite colleges use when they don't feel like students are ready for first year college math. And instead of wasting a year trying to figure that out, we would just channel our juniors right into that prerequisite course, which is ten-ten. And so we have hundreds of students taking that course currently. Um, we feel like we've taken the next step in monitoring and requesting and using the PLC model to provide additional time and support. So I'll just give you one example, given the time. What the high school is doing this year with that support class is the math teacher said, um, the, the number one reason why students are not successful in their courses is because they, um, that, that, they, they haven't been willing to do the outside of school time necessary to be successful in a college class. And so, just like with anything else, if you don't have a pencil, we give you a pencil. If you don't have your book, we bring you a book. For math ten-ten, if you're not getting your homework done at home, and there might be really good reasons, family responsibilities, work, extracurricular, et cetera, then we provide you time during the day with the support of a teacher to get your out-of-class work done. And that's given this opportunity to so many more students than, um, than previously, um, were able to participate.
So when, when they're done, they also have a little bit of credit, right? College credit?
Yeah, so this prerequisite class is concurrent enrollment credit, but it's not major seeking credit. And so we have to help the community understand that when you get through ten-ten, you're not complete. You're only set up to take that first year college math class your senior year. And if you get that done, wow, the world is your opportunity. I'm really hoping that our community can understand that and really get behind it. I can't think of any other initiative that would promote a college-going culture than to get your first year college math done. I feel like it's such a gift.
Are we still the only school district involved in that?
We're the only one that's allowed to, but everybody's just waiting, 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 watching to see if, um, we can demonstrate success so that the state board will release it across the state to all the ELEEs.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a son that just got a job because of Wasatch High School math. And then, and a hundred percent that's the reason why.
That's so great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Just to reiterate what Todd said, I, I know I've shared this with the board before, but it, I, I think we need to keep saying this often. And that is the advantage for our students to get ten-fifty on their transcript is it locks them in in a, at a sequence for their college math at the state universities. So we all know how math works for the, for all of us average people, right? You take a math class, you pass it. Um, you go, you know, you take your, your high school math classes even, even up to towards AP. Maybe you choose to go on a mission, maybe you travel the world for a year or two. You come back, you, you, you walk into a university, it's time for me to go to college now. Um, it's been a couple of years. I go in and they say, here, here's a diagnostic test. Let me, let's see where you fall. Where do most people fall? Two or three steps below where they ended up because they've forgot, they've lost it. So you walk into UVU, they say, okay, you're back in math ninety-eight and it's not even a math class. It's just a, it's just a stepping stone. And then you gotta take ninety-nine and one-oh-two and then you can take one-ten and start your math sequence. But if you, but if you have this transcript in your hand and on record at the university that says, Todd Johnson passed ten-fifty as a high school senior, you're locked in now. You don't have to take the diagnostic. You're already on the, you're already on the, in the college system. So you can go on a mission and a Japan and come back three years later and you can start much higher, you can, you can jump in where you belong. You can catch up, you can do what you need to do to move forward. So it's very important for our, for our kids, um, to finish up year number four. We've always preached from the first day Jason and I walked into Wasatch High about the same time with Todd and Brett Zabel and, and, and Sean and others in the room. And we've always preached four years of math for our students. And we need to continue to do that, even though it's not required. We need those kids, we need our community. We need those kids, we need our community to understand as parents, don't quit on us after your junior year. Take 10-50. If you took 10-50 as a junior, you were a year ahead, then take an AP class. Take AP Stats or AP Calc, one of the two, and keep going. Four years of math. That's what we want to preach in Wasatch County School District.
Thank you.
Maya's in it. We're good.
Perfect. We're gonna get Maya through.
We're gonna get Maya through.
Thanks Todd. Okay, anything else before we move on? And I guess we'll move on to Superintendent, your report.
Okay, a couple of things. As you, as you listen to Todd talk about identifying high-performing teams, that's an important part of our, of our Good to Great program in Wasatch. And it's, it's not rocket science, and you don't have to look very far to find this concept. It's professional learning communities at work. We know that, we know that way back in the day, back when, back when some of us were at Wasatch High in the eighties, that if the football coach, or the baseball coach, or whoever it might be, if, if there was a, if there was a school two counties over that was kicking our butt in one of those athletic events, what did the coaches do? They jumped in a car and they went over to see what offense was going on at Morgan High's practice. And they got an invite, and they went and watched. Whoever's doing it the best, that's where we gotta go and figure it out. When we started down the road with the PLC concept, and I know I've told this story many times, I'm gonna tell it one more time today on this, on the bench tonight. We had an old football coach stand up in one of our meetings, and he said, "This PLC thing, learning from other high-performing teams, we've done it. We've been doing this in athletics my whole career." And he had moved out here from Missouri, and he talked about jumping in the car and going to all these other places. And he said, "While we were doing that as football coaches, as history teachers, I was in a hallway with four other history teachers, and not one time did we come out in the center between the classes and talk about what we were teaching, or how we were teaching it. We talked about a lot of other things. We never talked about our teaching as a group, or with one another. It just was kind of a, it was almost a thing, a sign of weakness, if you had to go ask another teacher for some help." So, the professional learning community concept, as Todd has described it tonight, is just that. It's seeking advice from high-performing teams. I like when Garrick talks about, the only person that really should be teaching our teachers how to teach are other teachers that are doing it well. That's who should be teaching it. We don't believe there's any magic in a book or in a program. We do, we do believe there's, there's, we do believe there's a lot of power in PLCs and making sure that we're getting, we're getting our players, our teachers to the highest-performing teams to learn from. That's what's bounced us to where we're at today, as we look at our achievement. The other thing that we're, that we're really concerned about here, and that we do well, I believe, is we do seek out expert advice. And we do seek out expert advice, whether it's in, 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 we're gonna show you a video here in a moment, and I'm just kinda leading up to that video. And the video tells a story, so I won't, I won't take too long. But whatever it is we're trying to get better at as adults, it's, it's important for us to seek expert advice from other adults. And over the years, we've had, we've had some pretty profound experts that were considered national experts, that we've been able to draw them to Wasatch District to be our friends, to advise us and help us. And literacy and reading is no exception. And so, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna set the video up that way. It was not my idea to play this video because there's one guy on the video that's not much of an actor. He doesn't do too well in front of the camera. You'll see who I'm talking about. But there is a, there is a, a center up at Utah State University. It's called the Center for the Schools of the Future. And it's, it's ran by two professors, a guy named Parker Fawson and a guy named Ray Reitzel. They're both nationally known for being some of the foremost experts in, in reading. And Ray Reitzel is known around the world for being one of the top two or three experts in reading. And these are two guys that, as we figured out, that we were struggling a little bit a few years ago, that we tapped into their knowledge. And at the time, Parker was at UVU as the Education Dean. Ray Reitzel was at Utah State, and they've kinda come together now up there, and they've become friends of the district. And they put together a video that's now on their website that talks about the science of reading. And it's posted there now. We're going to post it on our website. We wanted to give the board a preview of it. And because it speaks to, it speaks to Wasatch County School District and how we do go about things, and the people that we're rubbing shoulders with as adults so that we can ensure that our kids are getting the best chance at instruction. And once it comes into this district, you see these people in the room, and we've got, we've got the best of the best here to make sure that it works, and it works at high levels. So, let's just enjoy this video for a few moments, and then I've got one other item.
When students can't read, it's a tremendous disadvantage, not just in school, but throughout life.
Eighty-five percent of kids who have low literacy levels interact with the criminal justice system in some way. It's eighty-five percent.
For a number of years, we've had a large percentage of the students in third grade who have not been able to read proficiently or write proficiently by the end of that grade level. This is absolutely critical for us to change that trajectory for children. Reading is a foundational skill.
When kids come to school not being able to read, and then they stay that way for, say, a year, or maybe two, and the school doesn't bring them up to grade level, what we see is about a ninety percent chance they'll never read on grade level again in their academic career.
It's embarrassing for students, too, once they reach middle school and high school because they can't read with their peers. And those are the most important people when you're adolescents.
If a student is off-level in the third grade, it becomes this, this ten-year battle with trying to get them caught up and on level.
You often will hear, up through third grade, kids are learning to read. Beyond that, we're reading to learn. And if they are struggling up through third grade, that makes it much more difficult.
Many teachers, in their teacher preparation programs, and in their subsequent employment, working in districts and receiving professional development, seldom get a lot of training on how to deal with kids who struggle learning to read. What we see in the school system as a result of this is the deployment of a number of programs that are built to intervene on behalf of struggling readers, which tends to slow the curriculum down for all the other kids. And it all begins in the way we prepare teachers. When kids wash their hands, there is a clear, measurable difference in how much disease and sickness is spread in the classroom. Similarly, when we teach children to read, there are strategies that are supported by science. And when used properly, it reduces student risk, student reading failure, and student academic failure.
The science of reading is a body of knowledge that we've acquired over many decades about how the brain works and how humans develop an ability to read and write. So, we rely heavily in the science of reading on cognition and neuroscience to help us understand those processes.
We have a lot of misconceptions about the science of reading. What the science of reading is a body of research about how children learn to read. In some sense, it's related to education, but it doesn't tell us about how to teach reading. The science of reading is about how our brains process reading.
It is decades of amassed, basic research on how human beings learn to do this thing called reading.
And then we add on top of that the knowledge we've acquired over many years as well on how to translate that knowledge base into instructional practice. And we call this the Science of Reading Instruction.
It's a much smaller body of research that tells us how to teach reading. Okay, based on the science of reading, what do we know about how to teach reading? And that's the big difference between the science of reading and the science of reading instruction. And they should never be intermixed.
The science of reading research base provides a knowledge base for teachers to understand that process. The science of reading instruction, knowledge base, provides a knowledge base for teachers to know which of the many tried and available instructional strategies and interventions there are, to choose the very best of those to bring to bear in the initial stages of instruction. Wasatch County School District has always been a really good school district. And we've been innovative, we've been on the front lines of lots of initiatives. And eight years ago, we were looking at some reading results, and they're not very good. In fact, they're in the lower fourth in the state. And we identified that reading is not just an elementary problem. Reading is a K-12, every grade level, special education, every program we have, reading has to be a priority. As we started searching for expert help, we started talking to Parker Fawson, and he had recently joined a group up at Utah State. And at that center, they're providing research-proven strategies for reading. And he introduced us to Ray Reitzel. To have these two guys come together and actually show up in person at Wasatch County School District and tell us that, you know, maybe the magic that you're looking for in your PLCs as it relates to reading is not really magic, it's science. And it is the science of reading. With their leadership and following the tenants of the professional learning community, and making sure that we're very focused on the science of reading, and we ended up accomplishing our goal of being number one.
In Wasatch, we have really backed up the research in saying, by following the science of reading, through the science of reading instruction, we've been able to see the best results that we've ever seen in helping all kids.
We don't have to guess. We know what works. We have the science of reading. We have the science of reading plugged into our high-functioning PLCs. That's what's helped us accomplish what we've accomplished. And we're headed in only one direction, and that's up.
CSF was established in the late 1990s by the Utah Legislature with a mission to engage with our colleagues in public schools to implement research-based best practices. And this is certainly an area that holds great weight in children's lives. And so, we've decided to begin our work as a center in focusing on how do we help children learn to read at a much higher rate.
The Center for the School of the Future is a group of researchers, of educators, of people who have a passion for children learning. That is so critical. And so, the school is all about, how do we make more children learn better?
We can go in and look at a school's learning mission, usually captured in their mission statement. And usually, the accomplishments that they're achieving in learning is vastly different than what they want to achieve, which is expressed in their mission statement. We can go in and examine that gap with them, and help them to redesign their system in such a way that they can narrow or close that gap.
The science of reading pulls from research of all the different aspects of how we learn to read, fluency, phonemic awareness, phonics, all of those different aspects. So, as we take all of the research that's been done, and we truly understand how students learn to read, the greatest part about it is that it works for all students. And when we say "all" means all, we really, truly can do that. We have a student in kindergarten who just came to us with no English. And because of the systematic, explicit instruction he's getting, he knows his letters and sounds, and he's on to blending because it's so routine and so explicit that it doesn't matter what the background of the child is. And he's going to be a reader, and he's just in kindergarten. So, it's exciting.
If you don't understand the process that's going on between the ears of a reader, you have a very difficult time bringing to bear the interventions, strategies, and practices that can assist that student in overcoming whatever obstacles they're finding in learning to read. And that's critical for every teacher to know.
It's made a huge difference in my understanding of reading and my understanding of what it's like to teach kids to read effectively.
By following what these professors have brought to Wasatch County School District, we've changed the lives of hundreds and hundreds of kids, and we're a small district.
So, to be able to take that and not just get the knowledge base, but also how to put it into practice through the things that Parker Fawson and Ray Reitzel taught our teachers, when we have learned the science of reading, that's what happens, is everyone's confidence and excitement grows. And that's really the mark of good professional development. And that's what the Science of Reading and Science of Reading Instruction have done for kids and teachers in our district.
The collaboration between our district and the Center for the School of the Future has been just beautiful because their expertise is around the science of reading and really identifying what makes the biggest difference. Between their expertise and our expertise in how to manage that, it really came together to produce excellent results.
And teachers get into the business for one reason and one reason only, as I did as a teacher. And that was to make a real difference in the lives of kids. And the one thing you can do for a child that will probably make the largest difference in their life will be to teach them to read. And I have never had more of a burst of pride and energy and accomplishment and joy than when I see the lights go on in the house of reading for a child.
Great.
Now, Wasatch group read the video. That was awesome. They were all good.
Right. Which actor were you talking about that wasn't very good?
Yeah.
Yours too.
No, it's, I think it is a testament to our district. And when, when this group chooses a district to be in their video, you see where they came to. And we've been on a journey with them these last few years, and it's produced some amazing results. And I think it's indicative of, it really embodies what, what we do here and how we approach things. And we simply want to be the best. We want to be the best for our students. We want to make sure that we're giving our students every chance to be successful. And we know that it all, it does all start with reading. And this is a great partnership that we forged. I don't know if you remember maybe approving a trip to Mississippi. Dr. Reitzel's had a big impact on the state of Mississippi with doing some state initiatives out there. And he's, we've taken two different groups from Wasatch now out with them. to visit the state and kind of see what, they're doing some amazing things in, in some really almost hundred percent minority schools in Mississippi with the science of reading. And that's been fun for us to, to go out and see that and kind of make some connections out there with, with, uh, some different schools and people as it, as it relates to this. So it's, it's a great partnership and, um, Ray and Parker have be, have become good friends, um, to everyone here at Wasatch. And they're, if you see them in the hallways or around the building, they're, they're just part of the furniture. It's no big deal. They're here, they're here a lot. And, um, it's indicative of, of the level of instruction that's going on in, in Wasatch County right now. So we'll go ahead and put that up on our website. And, um, it's been, it's been finished up and released and it's on, it's on their website. So we just wanted to let you know that'd be going up there. And you can, if you, if you have people that wonder what we're doing as far as reading instruction, point them to this video. Have them take a look. Any, anybody want to add anything to this? All right, let's, uh, let's go ahead and let's move on to, I skipped a spot. We had board report. Uh, any?
Oh, you did.
Yeah, I did. Uh, anybody have anything they want to address from the board?
Yes, BA updates. We have a board of directors meeting, so you'll be getting those highlights and out here this week. Um, interim session is superintendent, and these guys know, is underway. And trying to, the superintendent association, school board association are all trying to, uh, be involved a lot more with the interim session. So it's been good. We're hoping to see good things come out of that as well. So definitely a lot of work always going on.
Thank you for your involvement, Marianne. Appreciate it. Who else? Kim?
I, I do have some thoughts. Um, I have a couple of thoughts. About what we just talked about, just our education elevated. You know, I, I think I've said this before, but you know, when we first moved here a long, long time ago, I brought four kids and put them into the Wasatch County School District. And I look out and I see, you know, a lot of wonderful faces who have made such an impact in my kids' lives and still do. I mean, sent three all the way through and one's making her way through successfully. And, um, you know, the experiences have been different for each of them, but they've been great. And, uh, I'm just, you know, my first experience was Wasatch High School football game. And I felt the community, uh, how do I say it? It was different. It was, it was a really cool experience. We knew we were at home. And I knew, I knew the school district was special. And throughout all the years that I've been involved, which is a lot now, I still see it. It hasn't changed and it just keeps getting better and better. And then the other thought is I feel like there are a couple of opportunities, a couple of opportunities that I feel like I missed in the past couple of weeks where, um, I just, I just really want to say thank you to the superintendent and to everybody here. Because you all, this district has a vision and you move forward with your vision, even when the vision might not make sense to people out in the community. But you move forward because you have this great vision for our students and I just really appreciate that. And I missed out on opportunity, on an opportunity or two to just say thank you to the superintendent. And I, I remember the first time I sat down with them well over a decade ago. And I remember thinking, wow, this is a person who has, um, who's trying to preserve the history of this community, but is forward-thinking. And I've always appreciated that. And I still see it to this day. So thanks for all you do and thanks for all you do out there.
I just want to say too, to finish, you know, we just came from visiting this new school. And, you know, again, like you're talking about with the, the vision, you know, I, I think for all of us, we've, we're, we're starting to see that, the, the next, the next phase of, of, of Wasatch County School District and how this will evolve and change with this new school, because it'll be big. It'll, i- i- it is a way how we approach our, our decisions here towards the hiring of people and, and how this will look going forward for the whole community and the whole valley. It's, it's, it's kind of daunting and I, and just so much respect for watching that, that happen, that process. And geez, go over that building and it's just like overnight, all of a sudden they got, uh, uh, ceilings and Steph Dishar and I are saying, but maybe we're going to open this next year. You know, it's just, this looks sooner than later. It's just amazing how, how fast it's, it's grown. So, you know, it's just, we, we got a lot going on and it's exciting, but yet, yet it's, uh, challenging. But appreciate all your efforts. So, thank you. Anything else? Cor. Paul, anything? Um, I want to just talk about education elevated a little bit. Um, we, uh, we, we really want to help our, our parents. I think our parents have a pretty good idea. We, we really want to help our community understand, um, what kind of school district they have. You know, the old saying of, of, uh, sometimes it's easy to be a prophet everywhere, but in your own hometown is, is certainly, there's some, certainly some truth to that. And, and, uh, you know, we had an experience a few years ago where we went out and we were, we were visiting a district. And you've heard me tell this story. And, and we were just really impressed because as we went around the community, everybody knew that their school district was one of the best in the country. And that's a, that's a school district and a superintendent that has been friends to us and helped us along the way with our journey. And, and, uh, we, we felt like the timing was right for us to celebrate some of the successes that we've had. We've, we've, we've come a long ways, um, from those days that I was talking about on the video when we, we realized we had some of our reading metrics that were pretty off and needed to correct them. And, and it's led to, to us, you know, now leading the state. And we, uh, we want everybody to know. We want, we want our community to know. We want those people that are not parents. Our parents, I think, have a pretty good idea. But some of those just taxpayers that, that, um, wonder, you know, is my money being well-spent in this county as it goes towards education? And we want them to know, you bet it is. It's being very well-spent. And we continue to, to do the very best for your students. And, and we, we do it as good as, as, as anybody around. And we're not resting on our laurels whatsoever. We're, we're pushing hard to continue to improve with each and everything that we, that we do. So anyway, we came up with this little, uh, with this little emblem, educate, education elevated. We, a lot of thought went into this over the summer. And we tried a few different things and we had a few different companies help us. And, and interestingly enough, we ended up kind of going back to, um, our varsity brands company that's been working with us on the new high school. And, and, uh, we put two or three of their things, combined them together and came up with this little, with this little badge or logo, whatever you want to call it. And as we, as we're sneaking up now on homecoming week, we would, we would like to really have the focus of homecoming week, at least from kind of the district's perspective, um, to, to work with or piggyback on anything that the high school is doing is, is to, is to, for this to be a week of us talking about what educate, education elevated means to us. And, and that it means that, that we are, um, we are a high-performing, high-functioning, high-functioning, leading district in, in, in not only the state, but the country. And this is why. And we want our community to be proud of us. We want our community to really understand. We talk about, we talk about efficacy. We talk about teacher efficacy. We talk about, um, collective teacher efficacy. Well, there's also community efficacy. And some of the programs, some of the extracurricular programs that we're really good at, that we're traditionally good at year in and year out, it comes with this collective community efficacy that, hey, if you, if you play for Wasatch, if you're on Wasatch's team, you're, you're just going to be good. That's just a, that's just an expectation. It's something we plan on. We want to collect that community efficacy in edu, in, in academics as much as we do any of our, we, we know our, our extracurricular are important. But obviously what we do and the most important is, is, is the academic piece of it. So I'm going to invite Steph Dishar to come up and just kind of share some thoughts. We just decided to pick on her. She's, uh, she's been very helpful through this process. How, as have, has everyone been in the room. But, um, she's been a great addition to our team coming over to the district office. And we've really appreciated, uh, what she's brought. And just fresh off of that experience of, of leading a school to, to thirty and forty point improvements in, in different categories. And, and so, uh, I really appreciate you coming up, Steph. And why don't you share some thoughts with the board?
Yeah, so happy to be a part of it. I think some of the, this is the presentations that we've been going around and visiting with the WPNs, the parent networks at each of the schools to just inform them about the, the new logo and the story, um, to inform them of the district goals that we have here so that they can feel like they're a part of it. You've seen the data from, um, you know, twenty seventeen where we were, you know, middle to the bottom third of the pack to last year jumping to number one, number three and number seven, which is so exciting. And I think, but even more exciting on the next slide, and I think it kind of speaks to what Kim was talking about. There's this feeling. And I was, I was scared leaving the elementary school as a principal because I was scared I was never going to feel that again. And I think it's this, um, it's like an anticipation of, you walk in the doors of when I was at Old Mill Elementary, and I'd walk in every morning and it was like this, something great's about to happen here today. And, um, I know it wasn't because of me and I know I love Doug Hardy and I, but I don't think it was because of him. Could have been because of Janet Christensen. She is that awesome as a, a secretary. But it's the community. It's the kids. It's the parents and the volunteers and the, and the teachers. So sad to leave that. And then last year, on my first couple of weeks, and now I was traveling out to Daniels Canyon and JR Smith and Midway and Heber Valley and WLA. And I was so pleasantly surprised that it, it wasn't Old Mill. It's Wasatch County School District. It's this feeling you walk in and they're your friends. Um, they want you to come on in and be a part of something cool that's going to happen today. And I think you see that and feel that. And I think the part of this education elevated is why should that be limited to only those who are directly connected to the school district, which are parents or students or staff? We want all of our community to understand how amazing our youth are and to come in and rub shoulders with them. And it doesn't matter what kids walk through our doors, greatness is depended on us. We'll make them great. We're going to speak greatness into them. And it's not just our school district. When I say us, I mean our community. And I think it's just because we live somewhere that really values our kids and knows they are our future. And so I'm so excited about this to have in one year's time, six hundred and fifty-two little faces or bigger faces, older faces as well, not just little kids that were last year below grade level and not, you know, performing at grade level or above, and now they were. Um, that's hundreds and hundreds of kids that have, we've done that for and that, that is to come. And I just think our whole community needs to know that they're a part of that. And, um, this is a way to celebrate it and to get the word out and to let them be a part of everything that's happening here. And, and I agree. I think superintendent has been such a, um, I mean, I don't know if you've ever been called a cheerleader, but I think you're a cheerleader. He's been such a cheerleader, a champion in this. And he's really helped bring our team, uh, together. And our, um, I've never felt more collaboration and excitement, um, amongst our schools. We aren't Old Mill or Midway or Heber. We're Wasatch. And, uh, this has everything to do with that vision that he and you all have started. And we're so excited to get the word out because we really are, we're the best. And our kids are the best, which is the most important thing. So that's what I wanted to add. Thanks, Steph. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. That was terrific. Appreciate it, uh, everyone. Um, anything else? Hey, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. We're going into executive for a few minutes, Paul's office. So, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you much.